Here.
Mark.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the October 23, 2023 Regular Council Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from October the 23rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the November 13, 2023 Regular Council Meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda for November the 13th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Committee reports. We have finance. Are there any others? Okay, finance.
Finance committee met on October 23rd. In attendance was Mr. Marquette, myself, Ms. Murray, and Mr. Kirk. Meeting was called to order at 4:45 PM. We went over the 2024 annual budget. Mr. Kirk led a review of that. The committee discussed departmental budgets, capital expenditures, and other spending priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. The committee approved the budget in its draft form. We talked about 2024 raises for full-time, non-bargaining employees. The committee approved a 2% cost-of-living adjustment for these employees. TIF extensions. Mr. Kirk stated that recent changes in the Ohio Revised Code would allow council to extend our TIFs for an additional 30 years. The new language gives the city until the end of 2023 to approve these extensions. A TIF extension would preserve critical revenue streams for an additional 30 years and allow the city to continue infrastructure improvements in the Crossroads region. The TIF extension ordinances will be introduced at the November 27 City Council meeting. Meeting adjourned at 5:03 PM.
Okay, any comments or questions on the finance committee report? Okay, reporter, the mayor and administrator. Allison, do you have anything this evening?
I do, very quickly. Leaf pickup is going on now, and they will continue to pick up leaves until the first major snow of the season, or December 15th, whichever occurs first. The second item I have tonight is North Branch Nursery will begin the replacement of the right-of-way trees that were lost due to the drainage project that took place on Hillview, Helen, Eleanor, and Central. So that will begin the week of November the 20th, and it'll continue until all 63 trees are replaced. And the final item I have tonight is a request. Let me pull it up quick here. Danny's Cafe has requested to put fire pits. These are natural gas fire pits that will be out front where the current round tables are. This is what a picture of something similar would look like, and then this is where they would be located out front of the new addition, as well as the existing addition.
All right, thank you. I wanted to thank everybody, especially Team Rossford, in hosting another very successful and safe Halloween parade. I think that's the best one yet. Number six is public hearing to address re-employment of Todd Adet as Economic Development Director.
Mayor, if I could, if we could go back, council, Allison presented the request from Brad. It'll be similar to what he has on the other awards in effect now, but because that's public property, we would need council to approve that. So if I could have a motion to approve, and you could vote on it, and then we can inform Brad whether or not, because it's going to encroach onto the city right-of-way.
Mr. Marquette.
Really, the fenced-in area out front, that's the area we're talking about?
Yes.
And it also in front of the new building. That's what he wants, the extension.
Okay. So that walkway he was talking about having is not going to be there? It's just going to be fire pits out there now? Because wasn't there supposed to be a walkway connecting the two with an overhang? Wasn't that what you wanted?
Yes, and I think there still is going to be that, but located under the overhang would be a fire pit. Two on one side, two on the other.
There, so.
So no more tables? I think these would take the place of the tables. Again, I believe these would take the place of the tables because there would be seating around these similar to a table.
Yes. Actually, if you went back to that first picture? See, so there would be chairs around the pits.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire pits.
Second.
So would the fence be down then?
No, he has to have the fence up because he's going to serve people all there. So it has to be fenced in.
So by that drawing, it, as it extends down, it's the same distance as the existing right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Where are we?
A second.
Got a motion in a second. So vote on the motion to allow the fire pits in front of Danny's current building and new proposed building. Echol.
Aye.
Obador.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Kevin.
The public hearing, as council knows, Mr. Adet retired. He will have an ordinance at the next meeting about re-employing him on a contract, part-time basis. But in order for us to go through this, the revised code, since he's receiving retirement now, the revised code requires him to sit out 60 days, and then requires us to hold a public hearing. We have notified the newspapers about this. Stephanie posted this. So this is just formality, for want of a better term, for the public to comment on us re-employing Mr. Adet. And again, it's not just Todd Adet. We've done it before with other department heads here. So, Mayor, if you just want to open it up for public comment, if there is none, then we just hold it.
Yes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this, or has any questions or concerns? No.
We'll have the ordinance in front of you next week, or next council meeting for his re-employment.
Okay. Correspondence, Mr. Watson.
I have one piece of correspondence, Mary. It's addressed to Chief Todd Kitzler at the Rossford Police Department from Mark and Maria, I guess it's Paiza, from Galeno, Ohio. Dear Chief Kitzler, we want to congratulate your department for being named Agency of the Month by the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police in recognition of your community outreach program. As citizens and parents of a police officer, you will be receiving a check in the mail as a small token of congratulations and thanks for the efforts of your department to improve community policing relations. We hope you use these funds from the Paiza Family Fund of the Columbus Foundation to help keep up any of the community relations outreach programs. The Law Enforcement Foundation has been critical in, to making this donation possible through their administration of the program. We are proud of you and your department. Well done. Regards, Mark and Maria Paiza.
Great job, chief. Introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-69 by title only?
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-69 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing agreement with Skanel Properties, number 573 LLC. This is a first reading.
Allison.
Yes, this would be the service agreement for the Skanel TIFs, and Kevin's going to explain further.
Yes, so council, just to give them background, the TIF, this deals with the Skanel properties on Glenwood. They're the two buildings up there. And council tipped that last year. So what that means is that the increase in property tax, 75% of that will go directly to the school to make them whole. The remaining 25% will go into a TIF fund that Chris will be, once that starts coming in, when do we, in March and August? That's usually when they're dispersments. So there'll be money coming into that fund. This is a service agreement with Skanel because what, Skanel put in about $6 million of infrastructure there. So the service agreement, it's similar to what we did with Amazon and the other developers, is Skanel fronted their own money. That money comes into the TIF. The city keeps 25% of it as development seat money for other things in the future. That, the 75% that gets paid to Skanel until they get paid in full, their investment. So the city's not out anything. Again, developer paid for all the infrastructure. It's just a mechanism for the money to go back to the developer because of the increase in the real estate taxes. The school's not harmed, the city's not harmed. It's just a repayment to the developer over a period of time. That's this ordinance and the second ordinance, because they're two buildings.
Caroline?
Move suspension of the second and third readings.
Second.
Is anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No emergency clause?
No. Nope, they must not need it. Nope. This was done by Cory's office. Yeah, we do not need it as an emergency.
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-69. Echol.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Obador.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-70 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-70 is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing agreement with Skanel Properties, number 562 LLC. This is a first reading.
Mr. Obador.
Move to suspend the second and third reading of 2023-70.
Second.
Is there any questions in regards to this ordinance passing this evening? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-70. Obador.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-71 by title only?
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? 2023-71 is an ordinance providing compensation for certain employees, non-bargaining, of the city of Rossford, repealing any portions of ordinances in conflict therewith. This is a first reading.
Allison.
The department heads and the non-bargaining unit employees, the full-time employees of the city, have not had a raise since the beginning of 2022, so it'd be January of 2022, and this is 2%, which is under what the union contracts are getting.
Okay.
I'd like to move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No emergency. Move to adopt ordinance 2023-71.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Obador.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Is, is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-72 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? 2023-72 is an ordinance amending, supplementing number 11, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023, passed by ordinance 2023-10. This is a first reading.
Allison.
This is a supplemental, and I'm going to let Chris explain the details of it.
Thank you. So this is adding money to the budget for three separate items. The first item, our Public Works Department head mentioned that the truck that they used to grind the roads in the winter needs repairs, so we'd be adding $15,000 to the budget to get that truck repaired. Number two would be new plates for the police vests. We're adding $10,000 to the budget for those. And the third item would be adding funds to the budget for the fire personnel levy. The revenue we received from the levy this year was slightly more than what was budgeted. Adding funds to the budget would allow the city to fully expense the fire personnel levy.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Obador?
Move to suspend the second and third reading ordinance 2023-72.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, there's no emergency, so I would, motion to adopt.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-72. Obador.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-73 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-73 is an ordinance approving the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024. This is a first reading.
Allison.
This is the first introduction for council for the draft budget for 2024, and I'll let Chris explain the details.
Thanks. So this is the, as it was said, 2024 budget. Overall, the budget is roughly $20.6 million. Of that, roughly $7.5 million will be used for capital expenditures such as reconstructing Windsor and Jennings Road. We have renovations at our Wales Road Public Works facility slated. We're looking to repair the water feature in front of the municipal building, and we are looking to purchase vehicles for the police and public works departments. Operationally, our 2024 budget is very similar to our 2023 budget, just a few moderate, or a few adjustments here and there. The administration collaborated with department heads on their specific departments, and they all signed off on their budgets. And the finance committee reviewed and approved the 2024 budget in its draft format at the 10/23 meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Obador.
Move to suspend the second and third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-73. Obador.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-74 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-74 is an ordinance for transfer of funds in conjunction with the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024. This is a first reading.
Allison.
Yes, this is the annual transfer of funds, and I'm going to let Chris explain this as well.
Sure. So the, the transfer of funds ordinance is typically passed with the annual appropriation measure for, for the next year. Basically, it maps out our general fund transfers, where they go, and for what purpose they're going to be used for.
Okay.
Motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-74. Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Obador.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-75 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-75 is an ordinance authorizing, approving change order number one, and amending the contract with Geddes Paving Incorporated on the East Elm Tree Road project and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison.
So you might remember that we did East Elm Tree Road, and this is the first change order. On all of our projects, we add a 10% contingency in the ordinance. This falls within the 10% contingency, so it didn't have to come to council. The reason we came to council is so we could make the explanation. If you look at the picture above, the pink is the end of East Elm Tree. That was the original project, and that was what was originally bid. In the course of the project, Northwest Water and Sewer cut a trench in the green, so the city went back in and said, yes, we're going to pave over that as well, because there was a line, and it did not look good on either side. So the purple we were going to do as well, so that all of East Elm Tree would be complete and look the same. However, the Northwest Water and Sewer District has a project coming up, and they'll be cutting that from where the purple and green intersect all the way around the loop next year. That'll be a project of theirs in the spring, so when they're complete, we will work with their dollars, as well as the city's dollars, and do the paving for the purple portion.
Okay.
Move, suspend the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there any one in the audience has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? Go ahead, Mr. Appelhans, please step up and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, F177, I don't have a problem with the project, but sidewalks included in the project, and why not? I thought we were, I thought the intention would be make sure we have sidewalks and things.
Go ahead, Mrs. Echol.
There are sidewalks there. It's curbs that we put in. There are sidewalks already existing there.
Are sidewalks on both sides? I don't think so.
On the additional.
Yeah, but where you, where you put the curbs, there's no sidewalks. So that's going west, right? West Elm Tree goes west.
This is East Elm Tree.
Or East Elm Tree.
This is East Elm Tree.
But it heads west, right?
Goes from Glenwood towards the tracks.
Yes.
Okay. The pink line is above that, there's sidewalks. I mean, that's the other side of the road. I don't think it's up.
No, there are not, because there was not enough right-of-way at this time. However, we will look into that in the future section when they do the purple as well.
So then, green be done, everything will be done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, everything will be done when they're done with the purple portion.
Anyone else? Okay.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance 2023-75 an emergency measure.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-75. Obador.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2023-76 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading the ordinance by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2023-76 is an ordinance establishing the compensation for the human resource and communications coordinator position for the city of Rossford, Wood County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Go ahead, Chris.
I don't think we can do this fast enough. I'm motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2023-76. Heben.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Obador.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Okay. Introduction of resolutions.
Done.
All right. Council remarks. Mr. Toth.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Obador.
Yeah, I'm just congratulating Stephanie Kitzler on her new position. She does a fantastic job. Anytime I have a question or concern, she's got the answer in her fingertips. I congratulate her on this. She'll do a great job.
She's amazing.
Right, she's amazing. Also, I'd like to congratulate her for the city of Rossford Employees Newsletter, which I guess she's responsible for. I enjoy reading it. It brings me up to a few things. She does another, another good job, Stephanie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Echol.
I want to congratulate Steph. Got to keep her happy to make sure she stays around, because she's a great addition to this team. I want to congratulate Toby and everyone on the parade committee for a fantastic parade. Despite the rain and the bad weather, it was still just incredible. It's one of my favorite days in this city. I want to congratulate Chief Kitzler for another award. He's kind of getting to be, getting as many accolades as Tyler, so that's a great thing for our department. Congratulations on the completion of the police academy. That was a, that was a great event. If you haven't attended it, I strongly suggest you do. It'll open your eyes to a lot of different things that goes on behind the scenes that no one thinks about. And, you know, that's part of the community policing that the, the ward goes to, and it's just another thing that they're doing to try to stay connected with the community, which is nice to see. And I want to thank Chris for coming to the meetings and explaining things to us, because for so many years, we suffered through not the best explanations, and so it is completely a breath of fresh air to have you here and helping out. That's all.
Mr. Marquette.
I'm all good, thank you.
All right. Mr. Heben.
I agree with Caroline. That's all I have.
Mr. Reynolds.
Nothing for me.
All right. Audience remarks. If you have anything, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Go ahead, Mr. Appelhans.
Yes, F177, and on the earlier picture with the fire pits, will those be supplied by underground natural gas lines underneath them?
I believe so.
And then, there were issues when, when you okayed the overhang with the posts being in the, in the public right-of-way, and they had to be set up so they could be removed?
Yes.
When they needed to be. How is this going to happen? This is going to be a fixture that's going to be concrete, and?
I think the posts reached out into the right-of-way, and the fire pits do not. That's the way it was explained to me.
You said it extended into the right-of-way, and that was the issue with cocaine.
It sends onto the sidewalk.
Right. Yeah. So do those come to the right-of-way also? I mean, I thought that's what you said.
I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know. I haven't looked at the schematic, so.
They won't be blocking the sidewalk.
No, we're, I'm not talking about blocking. The idea behind, behind those posts be removed were if they, there had to be work, and, or if there was an emergency to get them all the way and be able to operate safely, correct? I mean, that's, that's what the purpose of the removable posts were.
The posts go on beyond the patio area, where the fire pits are basically where the existing tables are right now, and will stretch south with the addition.
Right, but they're not easily moved.
I don't know if they are or not, and I don't know if they would need to be.
I mean, I recognize that back porch, so I know it's probably a pretty solid.
But we can get those answers for you tomorrow.
All right. And the other thing is, I've still got an issue with, and I'm pretty sure you're expecting it, with the cones. Why do the cones remain out in front of the bank and Kim's cakes? I understand, I understand, I understand the purpose of putting the cones to that point to notify traffic soon enough, because before, it was a very short notice. But now, you're leaving them up all night, and they're going around, you're, you're choking off down to one lane, going around them, and then opening it back up. I mean, I look I understand, I understand, I understand the purpose of putting the cones to that point to notify traffic soon enough because before it was a very short notice, but now you're leaving them up all night and they're going around, you're, you're choking off down to one lane, going around them and then opening it back up. I mean, I look at it as it's just pure laziness on the contractor's part that he can't move them back, open that up. It's five o'clock at night, it's getting dark early. Why can't traffic flow through there freely?
Allison?
Mr. Appahans, we met several months ago, the chiefs, Tyler, Mark Zukowski, myself and Brad, when he first said he was going to do this project. And the initial concern is that when they amped up the construction, which they are going to do this week, then there's not going to be a place for people to pass pedestrian-wise on the sidewalk because they'll need to block the sidewalk off between Danny's and the pizza shop in order to make sure everyone is protected. We still have to provide a place for pedestrians to walk, so what we've done is move them off of the sidewalk and move them into that first lane that is closed so that there's still a way that pedestrians can travel in that closed lane from Bergen Street to the pizza shop. The reason that we set the cones up one block ahead is so that traffic can safely prepare for that closure.
And, and that's pretty much what I just said and I understand that. It's to prepare for the closure, right? But they take them down now, right? Are they going to put them out and leave them out?
They're going to this week, yes, so we are preparing the traffic to...
Well, that's, that's where the confusion comes in because they're putting them away there and then you're opening up 150, 100 feet after the cones, you know?
This week, they will be amping up the construction that's going on and then they will have that lane closed all the time.
And then there will be barricades and signs for pedestrian traffic not to cross through that point?
Yes, and there will also be paintings on the road.
And you'll have, and you'll have to come out into the road?
Yes.
Okay.
And there'll be paint, there'll be markings on the road that instruct pedestrians to go out into the road in order to be able to pass.
But, but up until that point, I mean, I don't understand why the, why the contractor can't come back and walk.
Do you have any, do you have anything else? Because there's other people here that would like to speak, I'm sure. Is there anyone else?
My name is Linda Goblish. I live at 120 Bergen Street. I'm directly across the street from Danny's Bar. And the sound is better. I can hear, still hear people in the tent city when they have two mice to drink. But I brought pictures of, it's city property and my personal property, that a truck, too drunk, police fail, where there's so many drunks, they can't even find to get their keys in their car. But he smoked this thing. It's, if you're parked in the bank and you're backing up, you would hit this. Well, it's hit so far, I mean, I can pass these out. It's, it broke our fence. It's, this is off its rocker, the, there's, there's...
What was, what was the date of this incident?
Saturday.
Saturday?
During the day. It was a silver truck.
Did you file a police report?
There, no. No, I have no faith in the police department. I have pictures of garbage, beer cans in my yard. There's one in my yard still now that's been there over a week. They're throwing them over our privacy fence. I got pictures of all of that. He's a bad neighbor. He's a bad neighbor.
Please, if you could, leave those with Chief Kitzler.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll definitely look into that.
And, and also one more thing about parking. My husband did a retreat in Tiffin Saturday and I came home about 9:30 and I don't know what was going on at Danny's, but it was loaded. The bank was loaded, my streets, your parking lot, everything was loaded. And I had no place to park. I had a car full of grandkids, my in-laws were in the car and we went down to the, you guys graciously gave Danny's up two parking lots. There was two cars in it, two cars in that parking lot.
Actually, it's public and anybody can use it.
Well, it is public. It's, it's Rossford 1 and 2, but you did it for Danny's.
No, we did it for everybody, especially the rec center.
Okay. Well, nobody uses it, so, but I can't, I've had three back surgeries. I can't park in front of my house. I have to carry groceries down the street. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Hold on, second.
We have one back here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Kristy Gonzalez. I live at 125 Walnut. And kind of the hot topic that everybody's wanting to know about, what is the plan for the fire department and when will we be able to talk more about the plan?
Sure.
Hear ideas, all the things.
Yeah, just a little over a year ago, we realized that with the growth that we're experiencing, that we were going to have to go to full time. In the past year, we've commissioned a study with a couple of our neighboring jurisdictions and since then, we've talked to a couple more of our neighboring jurisdictions and on or just before, just after the first of the year, council will probably have as many as three, no less than two options to choose from. But the city of Rossford is going full time.
Who are the, the folks that are currently, I guess, covering when we don't have personnel?
When, well, we still have our fire department and then we also have mutual aid with our neighbors, but in the meantime, I've asked the administration to reach out to our neighboring jurisdictions to cover shifts that we're not able to cover. Okay?
What, I guess specifically, like who covers our stuff? How, are, are they having staffing issues? I guess the word on the street is, we've had mutual aid from Lake Township. They're having difficulty staffing their own employees there. Just kind of one of all the, I mean...
All small, I shouldn't say all, most small volunteer departments, that model doesn't really work anymore and is changing, so we're trying to be as proactive as we can to bring us to full time as soon as we can in the best possible way. This is probably a 50-year decision, so we want to make it the right decision.
When you put out the new plan, will that include exactly, you know, how all of the funding pieces and parts are going to work and all of the, all that as well?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. We're actually in a pretty good position where I don't think we'll have to go out, regardless of what plan it is, that we'll have to go out for a lobby. All right.
Hi, Erin Crawford, 544 Brons Drive, Rossford. Follow up to that question, when you say Rossford will go full time, do you mean we will have full-time employees or do you mean we will have every shift covered or both?
It all depends. There'll be three different options. One of them will, us basically just going it alone. The other one might be a merger and the third might be a co-op or a district.
Okay, with full-time employees in Rossford?
It'll be matched full, if we do the one option, it definitely will be. The rest would probably be like a hybrid.
Hybrid meaning?
A combination.
Full-time employees or part-time employees at multiple different locations?
No, we will, we will have people in-house at our department regardless of what decision city council makes.
Okay.
We'll have full, full-time coverage then that we don't have now.
Okay. I feel it's very important for us to have fast, reliable coverage in our area with our, our population. I mean, a couple minutes from coming from another jurisdiction can mean somebody's life.
Of those three plans that will be proposed, we'll have people in our firehouse 24/7.
Okay, but we don't now.
Right.
Most of the time.
That's why we're moving towards that.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just stating, I feel like it's, it's urgent for Rossford to get some, something better in place.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Chris Segura, 624 Brons. As most of you know, I'm also lieutenant and union president of Rossford Fire. You said this need was brought up about a year ago?
Yes.
In 2018, you were all know, let, let known that we are struggling with staffing, correct?
Let me rephrase. A year ago is when we started putting pen to paper and, and trying to figure out a solution.
Okay. For the last two contract negotiations, I've requested full-time staffing, which was turned down multiple times. The reason for that being that there was no money. Since that, in the past five years, there's been multiple positions created. Mr. Ravel, Mr. Goss, Ms. Kitzler, Mr. Odette, an assistant for Tyler and Ms. Kitzler again at $60,000, I believe that's set up there. So in addition, our police chief also received a $14,000 raise despite you stating that none of the department heads would be getting a raise for three years following their 2021 raises. So when there's in fact no money, I find this really hard to believe.
I've never said there's no money.
This was said multiple times during negotiations.
The last negotiation, the last negotiation, I said we're not negotiating. I told Allison and my team, give them whatever they want because we need to be able to incentivize them to make more runs. We, we gave, we were getting to full time, so to keep talking about that is absolutely fine, I understand it, but we are going full time.
Right, but you continue to say, as well as other council members continue to say, we got everything that we wanted during our contract negotiations.
You did.
And that's not true because we requested full-time staffing. That was our first...
That wasn't possible at the time, but other than that.
And then, and then I met with you this past summer, I met with you this past summer because we still weren't making runs and, and I'm not blaming anybody.
It's just times are changing and that model's changing and I asked, what do, what do you guys need? What would, what would help? And you said you'd like to get paid twice a month instead of once a month and you wanted us to build you a gym. And I said, we have a rec center, you can use that anytime you want for free even when you're on duty. So, and since then, we've done the study, we've talked to our neighbors, we've talked to our chief, our assistant chief and the surrounding chiefs and we can talk about what happened in 2018 and 19, but we are going full time. That's it. That's it. We're going full time.
January 8th was your date, you said, for council to approve?
One of the dates or we could do a special meeting.
Okay, that's a...
If I said at before, the first day.
...from the notification required by the city to our union for going forward with the full-time staffing.
Okay.
We're also, you guys are also in violation of Section 16.2, which requires the city to meet with the union business agent and three of the bargaining unit members 30 days prior to contracting out any bargaining work. This has not happened despite a contract being in place for 2024 with a price tag of $100,000. And are also, we also already have people in place working to cover our shifts, which is what we need.
I'm sorry, Allison, go ahead.
We haven't even passed the 2024 budget, so we don't have a contract in place with anybody for $100,000.
There's a line item for outside contractors, Northwood, for $100,000, correct?
It's a draft, it's a draft in 2024 and it's not Northwood. It's, it's anybody that would, here right now, we are worried about covering citizens.
Right next to the line item, it says, Northwood, et cetera, for outside contractors.
The time the budget was developed, Northwood was our main contractor. Doesn't mean that Northwood's the only person, only people moving forward.
Regardless of outside contractor.
Sure.
Okay.
A neighboring department.
Right.
For 2024.
Going back to our meeting that you said we had, you also said that we'd be having a follow-up meeting and that hasn't happened yet. I've requested a meeting on July 27th, September 5th, September 27th and November 7th. No responses to those emails. Blame disregard these requests is concerning to say the least. It seems a Facebook approach is the only way to get any input or feedback from the city administration.
We're going full time.
I understand that.
No, I don't, I don't think you do.
I've, I've heard you.
Right.
Two of those options that you've mentioned are two to three years out and you knew that.
No, they're not two to three years out.
With...
I know, I know what I'm talking about and we're not negotiating it tonight. I'm not going over the details of all three plans tonight. I have a fire chief, I have an administration, well, we're getting through this and we're almost there.
Okay.
We're, I'm going to do what's best for the citizens of Rossford.
You said the next council meeting, you'll be presenting those options?
No, I didn't say that. I said I could, it's possible. I'm going to present those when they're ready. And when they're ready, I'm going to present them to city council and then I'm going to present them to the public.
I was just going off of what your news interview said. That was all. So again, I would like to request a meeting with you and Allison to talk over these issues and our contract at some point.
You have a contract. Do you want a reopener? Because you have a contract.
According to her, this is what we need to do for...
No, according to you, this is what we need to do. We, you're under a contract.
You know, I can read Allison's email to you if you'd like.
No, you don't need to do that.